I'd like to call our April eighteenth, Monday, April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, six o'clock board meeting to order. We welcome everyone who is in attendance and online. We do have a quorum. We have seven members of seven, so that is established. We'll now move on to item C on our agenda. Invocation by Supervisor Allen and Supervisor Matthews will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for each and every one that's here today. Pray you watch over them, lead and direct them in each and everything. Say and do, they'll be done in thy name and thy will. Help us have a good meeting tonight and try to treat everybody good and right. And thank you for this Easter season that you're back in their presence. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is item D, approval of the agenda. We do have an amended item M seven, so is there a motion to that effect?
Second.
Motion by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Bryant, to approve the amended agenda. Does anyone have any questions before we vote? All in favor, please record your vote aye. Those opposed, no. And seven to zero is the vote. Next is item E, approval of claims. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
And to make sure you use the electronic voting board, please. So there's a motion by Supervisor Matthews, seconded by Supervisor Bryant, to approve the minutes. Anyone that have any questions? All in favor, please record your vote aye. Those opposed, no.
That was minutes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, miss.
You said it wrong. You said claim.
Oh, excuse me. Next is item F, approval of the claims. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Bryant, seconded by Supervisor Davis, to approve the claims, item F. Anyone have any questions before we vote? All in favor, please record your vote aye. Those opposed, no. Supervisor Bryant, it is unanimous. Thank you. Under G, announcements, I do have two quick things. I distributed information to you all on behalf of the Anti-Litter Task Force about the spring cleanup that's coming up to help improve the look of our roadways in the county. It starts, the cleanup starts on April twenty-second, ends on May tenth. There will be a Saturday, May fourteenth, award celebration at twelve noon. There are first, second, and third place monetary prizes, so please spread the word on that. And day before yesterday, Sergeant Bruce Grazier with the JROTC program at the school contacted me, and he invites the Board of Supervisors to the Best of the Best Raiders Tournament on Saturday, April twenty-third, at eight-thirty in the morning at the high school. So if you want to see the Raiders in action. It's now time for public comment under item H, where public comments are limited to three minutes, and they are to be discussed. Any subject other than the scheduled public hearings, and we only have one under item K. So I'll open up our public comment portion to the public. Ms. Land?
Stand up.
Okay, thank you. Next, moving on, item I, VDOT Matters, Scott Frederick, Division Resident Engineer. And the first one is update of VDOT Matters. Is Mr., is he with us tonight, Ms. Carter?
He's not here tonight. He couldn't make it tonight. He said get all your concerns, and we'll get back to him. So any VDOT matters you have, just state them for the record, and we'll give it to Scott.
All right, so let's start with Supervisor Allen. Do you have anything, sir?
No.
With regards to VDOT. Supervisor Bryant?
No, I don't have anything.
Supervisor Matthews?
Yes, sir, I do.
Sure.
First one is, the address is eighteen oh six Kyra Road. The shoulders on both sides of that road, I think, if I'm not mistaken, is that right, Ms. Jones? But the shoulders on both sides of that road at that, at that address, for quite, quite a ways, there, about a quarter of a mile or so, you reckon? Or is it that far? Or is it? No, I'm, oh, okay, okay. Okay, and the other thing is, I'm still seeing quite a bit of debris from the storms on some of the secondary roads all across the county, not just in my district. So I'd like to know how that's going, moving on up the road.
Sounds good. Did that conclude your remarks, Supervisor Matthews?
Yes, sir.
Vice Chairman Chambers, do you have anything, sir?
No, sir, I don't.
What I had, I sent in an email a few days ago. Supervisor Bryant?
No, sir.
Supervisor Davis?
Just Route fifteen is getting rougher and rougher and rougher between the bridge and the aisle store. Feel like you're running on the washboard. They need you.
Okay, thank you. The next item is I, to request to schedule a public hearing on the Secondary Six-Year Road Improvement Plan at six o'clock PM for our May ninth meeting, a public hearing for that. So pretty much, we just need to schedule a public hearing, and.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Supervisor Allen, seconded by Supervisor Bryant, to set that public hearing for our upcoming meeting on May the ninth at six o'clock. Does anyone have any questions? All in favor, please record your vote aye. Those opposed, no. And that carries unanimously. Our, under J, our next presentation is a presentation of a resolution in memoriam to Planning Commission Chairman and longtime Planning Commissioner Pat Bo to his family. So because of the role that, and the impact that Mr. Bo had here on the folks of the county, if the board, if we could all assemble down together to present this resolution, as I read it, if that's okay, to Ms. Bo. So Ms. Bo, we would, please invite you up. So this is a resolution in memoriam of Patrick, of Patrick Pat Bo. Whereas Patrick Pat Bo departed this life on February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, at the age of seventy-seven years old. Whereas Patrick Pat Bo was born on March seventeenth, nineteen forty-four. Whereas Pat Bo was the son of the late Robert E. and Dorothy P. Bo. Whereas Pat Bo is survived by his wife, Virginia K. Bo, children Brian P. Bo, and Stephanie Shay B. Crutchfield and Chip, and Clay T. Bo and Peggy, granddaughters Emily, Katie, and Caroline Bo, Bailey Gentry Bo, and Aubrey Bo, grandsons Trey and Spencer Crutchfield, Robert Trent and Clay Patrick Bro, and sister Carolyn Cowardon Louis. Whereas Patrick Bo was a graduate of Benedictine High School in nineteen sixty-one, and was, and attended Virginia Tech in nineteen sixty-five. Whereas Pat Bo served in the United States Army, where he was honorably discharged in nineteen sixty-seven. Whereas Pat Bo had a successful career in real estate and land development. Whereas Pat Bo was a very devoted and very dedicated member of the Buckingham County Planning Commission from two thousand nine until his death. Whereas Pat Bo was a member of Salem United Methodist Church. Whereas Pat Bo was known as a true outdoorsman, where he loved hunting and fishing, hard work, sense of community, love of his family. Whereas Pat Bo was a pillar to the community, and was loved and respected by all who knew him, and will be greatly missed. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors does in memoriam on this fourteenth day of June of March, of March two thousand twenty-two, pay tribute and express its highest esteem for Patrick Pat Bo, and extend its deepest sympathy to his family and loved ones.
And I know that he would be touched very deeply as well. Thank you all very much for valuing his contribution to the county. God bless you. I appreciate that.
Appreciate you, sir.
Thank you all very much. My pleasure. Thank you all.
Next on our agenda, item J two, Davenport and Maguire Woods, regarding a resolution authorizing the refunding of two rural development bonds. So, Mr. Carter, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Yes, Kyle Lox from Davenport, and coming to be here and speak to you guys tonight and tell you the next steps in this refinancing process.
Do we have a presentation, or is this just going to be verbal?
He has a presentation.
Okay. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as Mr. Carter gets up on the screen. There we go. Again, Kyle Lox with Davenport out of Richmond. And tonight, we've got, I think, some good news. I think the last time we were here, talking about refinancing some debt for savings purposes, and we're talking about effectively the exact same concept this evening, in that we've been watching, we've been evaluating the county's debt profile. A couple loans that are tied to the utility system, that have been outstanding for a little while, and watching interest rates, went ahead and took some action, beginning just a couple months ago, as we saw rates and what they've done going upwards, and were able to capture the lower rates before they did move up. And so what we really have tonight is an action that will allow the county to take existing debt and simply take it from a higher rate to a lower rate. So we'll talk through what that means and give you some specifics. But again, in the environment where we are right now, where rates are indeed continuing to go up, we've got some very nice savings that'll be locked in and, in essence, set for the county. So with that, Mr. Carter, if you would, so what you see on the screen, Mr. Chairman, is some details on the two loans in question. It's a nineteen ninety-eight USDA loan, United States Department of Agriculture, and a two thousand five USDA loan, both tied to the county's utility system. In the aggregate, there is about one point six million outstanding right now, a little bit more than that, about, maybe round up a little bit, call it one point seven million that is currently outstanding. The first loan pays off in two thousand thirty-eight. The second loan pays off in two thousand forty-four. I'll tell you, what we are going to be recommending and doing by virtue of this is keeping the same final maturity and even shortening it up a little bit, meaning paying the loan off faster than you otherwise would have. So what we're not doing is pushing anything out. We're simply keeping the same, or even shortening the final maturity of the loans. The existing interest rates in the two loans, a four and a half percent on the nineteen ninety-eight loan, a four point one two five, or four and an eighth, for the two thousand five loan. In, in the aggregate, when you kind of average those two, it's about a four and a quarter. And so we'll give you a sense of, of the market. Maybe Carl, if you go to the next page here. So just a couple slides to, to maybe paint a picture of what interest rates have done. This is a tax-exempt interest rate graph. So on the left-hand side shows you a history going back to two thousand. Clearly, we've been in an environment where rates have been, since that time period, generally moving down. We've got these spikes from time to time, right? So they're all tied to, generally speaking, whether a crisis or an economic event. And then you go all the way to the right-hand side of that graph, and you see the beginning of the pandemic, and rates just dropped through the floor and kind of remained down there through two thousand twenty into two thousand twenty-one, and really beginning in two thousand twenty-two, remained at a very solid level. And so as the calendar year began, we started to work through this process, similar to what we've done in the past, whereby we took multiple options. So we've got some state loan programs we could look at, some bank programs we could look at. Ultimately, as we work through that, we're going to recommend that we move forward with a bank that was basically procured through a competitive bidding process, will allow us to lock a rate in that is very, very attractive, and just have that set through final maturity. But page two just gives you a sense of how those interest rates have begun to move upwards. And if we go to page three, this is a treasury interest rate, a five-year treasury. And I think this, this graph, this picture maybe even shows that, you know, sort of the events of the last couple of months even more clearly. And you can see, if you look at that right-hand graph, just how quickly rates have moved up, you know, basically from the end of last calendar year into this calendar year. And so the idea is try and capture some of those rates before they continue to move up. We've no crystal balls, whether they continue to move higher, but it kind of feels like they will, and start trying to capitalize on some of that while we can. So that leads to page number four. And so what we went through, very similar to what we've done in the past, is to competitively bid this to local banks, regional banks, national banks, kind of the more the merrier in terms of that, that bidding process. We did that during the month of, really, February into March. We received three proposals. They're in the middle of the page there. Farmers Bank of Appomattox, what we'd sort of qualify as a local bank, is the recommended bidder. And we also had a bid from Key and from Truist, which is, you know, the merger of the old SunTrust and BB and T together. So what we would consider at least, a very good local bank provided a bid, the details of which are at the bottom of the page. And what they would allow us to do is to reduce the interest rate on that loan. If you're looking at the bottom, kind of bullet points there, we'd go from a four twenty-seven to a two oh four. So basically taking over two percentage points off of the interest rate on those loans. Second bullet point, which is very important, we retain prepayment flexibility. It's hard to imagine we're going to want to refinance that loan in the future, but we could pay it off, and to the extent that rates somehow go back down, we'd have the ability to refinance it. That will save the county, and these are preliminary numbers, but it looks to be about three hundred, three hundred and ten thousand dollars in savings. That percentage there, we talk about that on a present value basis. Typically, anything of a savings that is at least three percent is viewed as solid. And so this is savings that is fourteen percent. And so much more substantial than even the, the kind of reasonable or responsible level of three percent. And then last bullet point at the bottom, as I mentioned at the outset, Russian, you'll be able to shorten the loan up a little bit without increasing the payment. So all in all, reduce the interest rate. It's a fixed interest rate, full term of the loan, prepaid loan, anytime and no penalty. Save over three hundred thousand dollars, and even pay the loans off a little bit faster. If we go to page number five, a whole bunch of numbers on this page, but this will just provide you some of those details. Probably the most important, several numbers are on the right-hand side. This is just showing the, the savings per year by virtue of the refinancing. So we'll save about twelve, thirteen thousand dollars out through two thousand thirty-seven. Those are savings for the utility fund. And then about five thousand dollars for a couple of years. And then you see out there in two thousand forty-three, two thousand forty-four, that's where the payments really get basically knocked off. And so we paid the loan off about two years quicker than we otherwise would have. The other thing I will point out on this page, on line fifteen, that net present value savings, again, that's a, a measurement that's kind of specific to the world of governmental finance, but anything above three percent is viewed as being solid. And so this is basically fourteen and a half percent. So this is, this is about as strong as you get as a refinancing. Page number six. So our next steps at this point, the bank we've been talking to, with Mr. Carter and others, they've held this rate for us, even despite the overall rising rate environment, which is important. They have said they'll hold this rate firm through closing, which we'll talk about when that is, if indeed we were to accept that this evening. So as one of your action items, you have a resolution that was prepared by your bond counsel, Maguire Woods. Again, point out the fact the rate is fixed to the full term of the loan. And again, we retain full prepayment flexibility. So all in all, similar to maybe if you've had a mortgage, and you say, all right, I'm paying four percent on my mortgage. I'd like to pay two percent. I'd like to have the ability to pay the loan off quicker. And I'd also like the ability to have, to pay the loan off in full, anytime of my choosing. That's basically what, what this would allow you to do. The credit for the loan continues to be a, what's called a revenue pledge of the utility system, with the backing, obviously, of the county behind that. So there's really no change from the existing credit. We're not having to add anything to that. It's basically the same structure they have in place right now. So with that, I'll pause and see if, Mr. Chairman, any members of the board, if there are any questions. We'll talk about next steps here in just a moment.
Thank you for your presentation. Does any board member have any question or concern or anything, gentlemen?
Could you go back, could you go back to the last financial page that had some, the numbers, not that one, the next one? In two thousand twenty, in two thousand forty-three, there's a sixty-one thousand dollar, one hundred and sixty-four savings. How did that happen? I mean, that's towards the end of the loan, and it starts to go down. Is that a misprint or something, or is that?
No, that's really by virtue of, we're basically shortening the loan.
Okay.
And so that savings happens because you otherwise would have had a payment if we. if we just let these loans run as they are. And so you have that pop at the end because we've kind of shortened the back end of the loan up a little bit, really to make it more palatable to the banks. And so that's what that is.
I just didn't want to have a surprise at the end of the loan.
No, sir. Good, good question. It's a, it's a saving, so it doesn't go up, it's going down.
Exactly. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you Supervisor Matthews. Any other questions? Well, thank you for being here tonight, sir. We appreciate that. And Mr. Carter, I'm sorry.
One, one last slide and then, and then I'll get out of your way. I know you have a busy agenda this evening, but in terms of next steps, on page number seven, really, this is the only action that we need of the board. This resolution we've mentioned that your bond counsel, Maguire Woods, has put together. And so the pleasure of the board, that would be the action that, that we would need of you to move forward. After that, the balance of April, the bank has really given us until the, the end of April. So about two weeks to kind of pull all the various closing documents and things together. But this evening is the only, the only sort of formal action we need of the board. So I think that resolution was in, in your packet?
Yes, sir. It's, it's in our packet for, with the agenda item. So is there any action as a result of the presentation?
Make a motion to move on it as it's presented.
Motion by Supervisor Allen, seconded by Supervisor Matthews to adopt the resolution regarding or authorizing the refunding of the two rural development bonds. So does anyone have any questions on that? Before we vote, all in favor, please record your votes, aye, those opposed, no. And that action is unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate you seeing us.
Thank you.
I want to make a statement, Mr. Miles.
Sure Supervisor Matthews.
This is about the third or fourth bond since I've been on the board that we've had a reduction in. And I just want to thank your company for helping us find these.
Job well done.
Yeah, and, and of course, I want to thank this board too for following through and being frugal with the money that the taxpayers pay in taxes. And we really do appreciate your company helping us in doing the audits. And I do review those religiously every year. So I'm looking forward to going through the, the next process here in another month or so with looking at the audits. So thank you so much.
Yes, sir. We, we appreciate it. And I would say, and you have to hear from the Robert Farber Cox folks later, but if, if the county were not in good financial shape, you wouldn't have near the ability to have done this refinancing or past refinancing. So it all ties together in terms of managing the finances and the budget, which I think is on the agenda, plus the audit that's on the agenda and having the refinancing. I think it's, to have all those on, on one agenda, I realize is a lot, but it all very much ties together. The banks look very closely at those audits. They understand you have good revenues that match your expenditures. They understand you have good fund balances and that's what provides them the comfort to, to lend at such attractive rates.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. All right, next on our agenda is item J3, Emmett Listley, Senior Architect, Architectural Partners. He is here to discuss the repair renovation of the old part of the courthouse project. So thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Over the last, I guess it's been about six months, we have, our team has been crawling around through and under the courthouse, doing the evaluation study that we were hired to carry out. We came and met with Mr. Chambers and Mr. Miles, I guess about a month ago, as building committee and presented our report, about 150 pages or so. And Mr. Carter has asked me to go through each of those pages tonight in detail. No. About a page and a half of the executive summary is what we have and about eight bullet points and certainly would answer questions that you have. That report basically came forward with a number of items of action to address for the courthouse. There is a number of missing masonry, repointing that needs to be done on the historic building. The alley between the historic courthouse and the clerk's office, moisture is going through that brick alley. There is no waterproofing on the wall below that, no drainage there. So the recommendation is to pull that brick alley up, excavate down along the old courthouse wall, put new waterproofing down as well as a French drain that would daylight to take that moisture away from the building so that it would not continue to enter. We would address any hazardous materials that are in the building. There's a small section on the slate roof of the old part. Little roof repair with some trim there that needs to be done. The expansion joint that happens between the existing historic courthouse and the new addition on the rear has deteriorated over time and needs to be replaced to stop moisture from coming in. Interior surfaces that have deteriorated would be treated and repainted in entirety as well as trim on the outside. Windows in the historic courthouse would be repaired. The sealant around those has hazardous materials in them, would be abated, would be resealed. Sashes cleaned, repaired to stop air and moisture infiltration. And then the site wall that I think a few years back collapsed on, if you're standing and looking at the courthouse on the left side of the entrance from, from the main road, from there around the right, basically has the exact same issues that the right hand side, the left hand side had and needs to be repaired as well. So those are the items that are in the recommendation for repair work going forward. Be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Anyone have any questions for?
Is there a list here somewhere? Because I didn't, that's not in my packet, is it?
In reference to the report Supervisor Matthews?
Nothing on J3.
We can get you a copy of that executive summary that he's talking about.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carter. Any questions about this project that the board would like to, Supervisor Allen?
What, what kind of money, how much money you think it's going to cost to get all this fixed?
You're between $400,000 and $500,000. I'm going to put an asterisk behind that. We all know the volatile bidding climate that we have these days. Boy, projects coming in, we seem to see, you know, the, the labor shortages, the material shortages, the supply chain, et cetera, et cetera. We, we find a, our crystal ball is fairly cloudy these days on projecting numbers. But you're somewhere in that, a little short of 400, a little over 500 is the estimate that our team has pulled together for that work.
Y'all doing it, y'all hiring somebody else or getting?
That would be a bid situation that the county would put out.
And then Supervisor Allen, and Mr. Carter, correct me if I'm wrong, but we do have in the proposed budget, $900,000 for this project.
I'm just trying to figure what.
We'd like to say that.
Don't tell all the contractors that.
Did you find a time capsule from Thomas Jefferson while he was in there?
I'm going to start digging some more. Any other questions about the project or for the gentleman?
Thank you. Is it all drainage, is no, is no structural damage or anything that you can see so far, right?
No, sir. There was, I don't know if any of you came by during the investigation period. I mean, we had water being sprayed on the roof, down the wall, against the windows to try to find all of those locations. And our team very thorough in, in going through that. But I don't think, we didn't see anything that was a glaring uh-oh in terms of structural stability. No, sir.
Other than the pointing of the mortar and?
Right. And that's just the standard situation that you found on historic structures everywhere. That, that mortar deteriorates over time. Needs to be done correctly to go back in.
Any other questions, gentlemen, before we move on? Well, thank you for being here, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, our next presentation is J4. We have the Director of Quality Control at Robertson Farmer Cox and Associates with regards to an audit summary. And thank you, Kristen, for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Carl, are you going to pull up the presentation? We prepared a brief presentation for you tonight to just give an overview of the audit. So we'll flip to like page three. So we were engaged to perform a financial statement audit and compliance report for the county for the year ended June 30, 2021. That's no different than the engagement we were prepared, we were performing in prior years. The audit was subject to auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America. The standards for financial audits contained in government auditing standards, also known as the yellow book. Specifications for audits of county, cities, and towns that's issued by the Auditor of Public Accounts, the Single Audit Act, which deals with federal awards, and the provisions of the Uniform Guidance, which also covers the federal awards. So we performed our audit in accordance with each of those standards we just mentioned. One thing that was highlighted this year in the financial statements was an implementation of a new accounting pronouncement, GASB statement number 84 fiduciary activities. That pulled in some new funds to the financial statements this year and changed the presentation of existing funds. And I have a slide on that a little bit later, so you can see some of those changes. The accounting estimates were consistent with prior years. They consisted of depreciable lives of capital assets, allowance for uncollectible property taxes, compensated absences, and then net pension and OPEB liabilities and the related deferred outflows and inflows of those. We tested all of those and found them to be reasonable. There were a few audit adjustments that we proposed during the audit and management has reviewed those and posted those to the general ledger. There were no consultations with other accountants about accounting or auditing matters. There are certain parts of the financial statements we issue varying levels of opinions on. So the first section is the required supplementary information. That covers your management's discussion and analysis. That gives an overview of the changes between last year and this year. And then the schedules of pension and OPEB funding. We review those and apply limited procedures to those, to that information. The budgetary comparison information, we do an in relation to opinion on the financial statements, basically saying that those are fairly stated in relation to the basic financial statements. And then we were also engaged to report on the other supplementary information. Those are the combining and individual fund statements and schedules. There are new statements this year for the new EMS fund and also the ARPA funding that was received. You'll see new schedules for those in the financial statements. The supporting schedules, those are your very detailed budgetary schedules that a lot of people really like. The boards like, really like to jump straight back to those schedules to see how well you performed each department and how well your revenues came in compared to the budget. And then the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. There is also statistical information in the back of the financial statements, 10-year tables that show you a trend analysis of how your collections and expenses have been over the past 10 years. So those are interesting to review. We do not issue an opinion on those, but we do review them and make sure they're consistent with everything else that we've seen during our audit. So the report card, we issued unmodified opinions on the report. That is good. That means your financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And then the internal control and compliance opinions were also unmodified or clean, meaning there were no significant issues that were reported in those. This year, we also, each year we issue a VRS attestation report. And this year, there were no items that were reported on that as well, meaning that everything was fairly stated that we tested. The next slide, we prepared a fund balance summary. And there are a couple of funds that carry a zero balance, so we did not include those this year. But you can see that the general fund balance increased by almost $1.5 million in fiscal year 21. The capital improvement fund, that really just dropped down to the funds remaining for the Gene Dixon Park. The EMS fund, you can see that there was a significant change there. You didn't have that fund in the past, it's now reflecting a $1 million fund balance. But that was because of the grant of $1.5 million received from Dominion, Virginia. So the water fund had a slight decrease in that balance of $534,000. And then the sewer fund, $215,000 decrease. And then I also thought it was prudent to list the unspent funds at the end of the year. CRF funds last year were almost $390,000 that remained to be spent. Of course, those had to be spent by December 31st, so I'm sure that occurred. And then the unspent ARPA fund, so $1.6 million was received in late June last year, but none of that was spent, so you're seeing zero fund balance there. You had cash, you hadn't spent it yet, so a lot, there was an unearned revenue that offset that. So you're seeing no fund balance there. But important to remember, you still did have the cash to spend. And the next slide just shows the school fund balances. The school operating fund does not carry a fund balance, so you see nothing there. A slight decrease in the school cafeteria fund. And then this year, one of the changes with the school, the GASB 84 that was implemented is that the school activity funds are now included in your financial statements. There's a separate column for those. When you look through the financial statements, you'll see that activity as well. That happened across the state, everyone. Now, when you see their financial statements, you'll see that fund now listed within the financials. So GASB 84 established criteria for identifying fiduciary activities. And then it reports those funds on a different basis that they were not reported on in the past. In the past, you would see like a special welfare fund had assets and liabilities only, no net position. But this year, you'll actually see that. So on the next slide, you'll see the change that the GASB 84 impact had. So in the past, your fiduciary funds, your special welfare fund had no fund balance listed. But there really was one, so we had to do a restatement this year. Under this new accounting, you change the whole methodology of how you account for that. So there's an ending net position of $236,000 for those funds. It's actually special welfare and then a, I think an escrow fund, a bond escrow fund, where you're holding funds on behalf of someone else. And then the school board, you see that the change there, the $259,000 was the increase related to pulling on those school activity funds. There were a few recommendations that we included in the management letter and we've discussed those with management from the schools, county, and social services. And gone through all of that and I think management is working on those items. And then next year, there is a new accounting statement, GASB statement number 87, you may have heard about, on leases. It's going to change the way that leases are accounted for. It's a significant change for financial statements. You will actually have operating leases that you will see come onto your financial statements where you've never seen that before. So it's just very different. And so what we're recommending now is that management, finance goes through and accumulates all the leases that you have, both lessy, less or sides at all levels, and make sure you start gathering that data. And then we'll work with management to make sure that that is properly accounted for going forward. But you will see a big change in the financial statements next year in relation to that. That is everything I have. If you have any questions, I will be glad to answer them for you.
Well, we thank you for being here. Does any supervisor have any questions for or comments for our auditor? Looks like we're in good, very good possession.
Very good shape.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for all your work, yeah. In the past, you guys have met with her sometimes two on two, do you still want to do that this year?
Does any board member want to meet with? The auditor?
You don't have to, no, but I'm just, don't, maybe if you do want to meet.
I mean, it used to bother me, she looked at, done a good job, we're in pretty good financial shape, what she's saying, so why we need to meet? Wasting our time, I think.
The only thing that I would be concerned about would be the, you said it was three or four different departments that, there were some adjustments made or whatever. What, what departments were those or do you have those right off the top of your head?
Well, we, we have various audit adjustments that were made. Somewhat, we're working with finance, with Carl on accruals and just the way that the accounting standards have changed in the recent years. More and more accruals are required. So one of those is your pension liabilities and your OPEB liabilities. No one recorded those in the past until like the retirement system in California or Detroit or wherever had a huge issue, they went bankrupt. So now there's new accounting standards that requires you to actually report those figures. And a lot of times, that information isn't available early in the process when management's going through their closing and all of that. So generally, we will assist with making sure that those are in, on the financial statement. So that's one thing. So pension and. Um so pension and OPEB liabilities, and then some other areas. Um Carl's been working the last few years on um more reconciliations and um accruals and recording the receivables and payables and things like that. And so in some cases, he actually prepares schedules. We audit them, make sure that they look good, and then we'll actually record the journal entries based on the schedules that they've prepared. Um so some of it is that, and then occasionally, you'll have a receivable that may be overlooked or something like that. And so we'll identify that through our audit procedures, so it just varies from year to year.
Does that help Supervisor Matthews clear up?
Yes, sir.
The comments you made, Kristen, would you consider them minor?
Um, yes, they are not.
Repeat comments, duh.
Right, so like I said, um Carl has been working really hard the last few years on pulling in a lot of those accruals and um working on those accounting changes that have brought brought more complexity to the financial statements. Um like Gatsby eighty-seven this year, that's going to be, like I said, a significant change, so.
You warned us about that last year.
I remember hearing.
Yeah, we've we've definitely been putting it on everyone's radar, but next year, like you will see the change. You'll see uh, you'll just see it in your financials. Um a lot of things, like up until, I don't know, four or five years ago, maybe a little bit longer, you never had anything called a deferred outflow and inflow, and now people are so confused about that. So there's just a lot more complexity to the audit report and to the financial statements now. So um you know, I I do think management has an understanding of all of the numbers and, you know, how they're derived. So I think that's very important. If the issues rose to a significant level, we would report those in the actual body of the report in that yellow book opinion I referred to. Um so those would be reported as significant deficiencies and material weaknesses. So we have not felt that they rose to that level, so that's why they're in the management letter and not in those reports.
So just minor, minor things that need to be addressed. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Brian. Any other questions? Okay, thank you again for being here and for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our presentations. Moving on to item K on our agenda, public hearings on our fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Proposed county operating budget. And before we open the public hearing, Mr. Carter has a presentation with regards to the proposed budget. So Mr. Carter, we will turn it over to you, sir.
Uh this public hearing tonight is for the proposed operating budget for the Buckingham County fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Uh thanks to everybody for coming out and the ones that are joining us online as well. Uh some highlights for this budget. This budget is continued upon all receipt of all federal, state, and proposed local revenues, meaning that if things don't come in as planned, we can always go back and change our budget to adjust accordingly. This budget does not include include any suggested tax increase. I probably should have started with that one first, but we do not have any tax increases in here this budget. Uh the budget as this bu- budget as presented is balanced with the for- with forecasted revenues and does not call for the use of fund balance, meaning there's not a need for you to use your accumulated reserve balance to get through the year. You can get through this year based on this budget by using the existing revenues and your existing expenses. Some quick facts also. The total budget presented is sixty-seven million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. This budget includes a five percent raise for all employees. This will partially be funded by the state. The school is proposing a similar pay increase for their contracted employees. County health insurance increased five point six percent this year, and the county retirement rate also increased one point seven eight percent this year. Wrong budget, that was one.
All good.
That was, I was working on my notes on this. Let me go to this. Although the school system is having a healthy increase in their health insurance and proposing a similar five percent pay increase, the school board is requesting level, local level funding this year. This budget does include funds for a full-time position in the registrar's department. And this bu- this budget does not include any federal, state funds for COVID. We've been blessed in having those funds coming to the county the last couple of years, but that uh lucky streak has come to an end, so does not have anything in this budget for those existing federal, state funds. Our expenses. Projected total expenses for fiscal year twenty twenty-three are sixty million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars. The top five expense categories are the school budget, of course, thirty-four million, ninety thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars. Total government expenses, ten million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. Your total commitments, four million, one ninety-two, four hundred and fifteen dollars. And those commitments are what you decide to set aside as projects like the courthouse project or uh the animal control facility at the town. Your total VPA and CSA equals three million, nine hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And your total debt service for upcoming years, three million, six hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars. Uh the total government expenses are ten million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and fourteen. That increase of seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, about seven hundred and sixty thousand from the previous year. That number looks inflated because when you compare what we were at this point last year to this budget, there are some numbers that weren't included in last year's budget that have been adjusted throughout the year. So that number is not really, it's an inflated number, but in order to compare exactly on April eighteenth this year, it's April eighteenth last year. I had to leave it in there, so you have a apples-to-apples comparison. Some of the overall increases are due to an increased cost of health insurance, retirement, and new positions and the five percent pay increase. Uh here's that uh budget again blown out for the local government expenses. And you'll see I got that FY twenty-two column in the middle. That's the unadjusted column, as I just mentioned before. So if you looked at our budget presentation last year at this time, it was nine million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, six, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. And you can see that at the bottom, that's a seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollar increase. Uh going to the top of the screen, the items in blue are those compensation board positions that have the five percent increase in their budget, whereas the non-comp board positions don't have their possible pay increase in it yet, because you guys can prove that or deny it. So those are now fixed charges, but for this budget purposes, the com- constitutional officers do have it in their budget. So as we get to the end, you'll see that um unassigned fund balance that should increase once we get the state uh comp board money in. The FY twenty-two numbers are just included from last year. They do not have any adjustments. So the total change over the inflated amount, I'm sorry, that total change is the inflated amount, but it gives a chance to compare apples to apples, as I said earlier. Uh these are some of the major changes. You can see uh Commonwealth Attorney and the Commonwealth County Attorney and Commonwealth Attorney. You see though, we split that department out this year, so there's a separate department for County Attorney and Commonwealth Attorney. So that used to be by Mr. Wright. He did both hats, wore both hats, so that is two separate departments now. So you can see those two numbers should be netted against each other. And then I'm must skip the slide. Right above that, the registrar office is sixty-three thousand, one sixty-seven increase. That's that new position that we put in there for the full-time registrar's position. Uh the courts, they have a twenty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-eight dollar increase. That's due to pay increases and increased benefits. Uh law enforcement, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollar increase. That's due to pay increases, increased benefits, and this includes the two emergency medical dispatch positions that our finance committee met on, and we decided to add those to the budget, upcoming budget. We know we're gonna have to need more of those positions in next year, but we just started with two and get it started and get us going through next fiscal year. Uh animal control, that's sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars increase. That's due to a new position that was added since our last budget, so we now, as you all know, we had three ACO officers. Uh general properties, that has a new position as well, but with their decreases they had, that line only increased twenty-two thousand dollars. Uh solid waste. This is one of those budgets that we've been watching for a while with the gated system. We are still watching it to make sure that that number starts to go down. Um we still have monitors at those sites, so as those retire and move on, we want to replace them. Uh that budget has kind of been under budget for a while, so we increased it to try to get it closer to the actual amounts. If you look at that history for that department, it's closer to a million dollars every year. It's not, it's not near that seven hundred and eighty-two thousand that we had last year. Um the E nine-one-one information technology line has an increase of a hundred and three thousand. And that increase is a reclass. Last year, uh Mr. Davis was, we didn't have EMS director. He moved to that department, EMS department, so he was wearing both hats. This is putting that money back to E nine-one-one so that we have a separate department as well. So this is just putting things back to where they were before uh Mr. Davis took over both positions. Uh preparing this budget, there are funds that come from state and federal governments to help reduce the amount of local money to fund government. Three major sources we have are other fundings are state, which is our comp board positions, federal funds, and grants. This slide here shows you what our total government budget is, ten million, four hundred and forty-six thousand. The second column is showing you our state, federal grant funds that we get to help offset some of those costs. That's about two million dollars. So when you take out those costs, you'll see our now new local government expenses, eight million, four hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars. As expected, the constitutional officers, they have the biggest amount of of state funding because they have comp board positions. So they get those positions and they get funding from the state to help pay some of those positions, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Uh the county administration finance department, uh thought it was important to note out that the treasurer and the commissioner of revenue are included in that first row. So that's the comp board fund we give for that position. We don't have any comp board funding positions at county admin, but the treasurer and commissioner of revenue are actually in that grouping. Um another important note, as you all have seen the news, the state has not adopted their budget at this time. So what we did for this budget, we went very conservative. Uh we put in, for most parts, the current year fundings, and we did some estimates on, but we have not included that five percent into state funding. So once that money comes in, it's gonna increase your unassigned fund balance, because right now, those pay increases with constitutional officers are in your budget, so you're footing to be a totally right now for that. So once those funds come in, it will it will relieve your um unassigned fund balance.
Is that five percent, is that a match, or is that two and a half and two and a half, or is it? So we gotta match five percent?
No, sir. It's it's straight comp board, so they pay the five percent.
What about the school division? What is there? Is there a match or not?
There, uh far as I'm aware, there's not a match either.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Speaking of schools, school board is next. Uh factors in solving the school's budget. Their average daily membership is one thousand, eight hundred and seventeen, which is down ninety-two students since the last year at this time. Their five percent pay increase for contracted employees. The remaining hourly employees will possibly have their hourly rate adjusted to reflect the minimum wage increase. And once again, the state has not finalized their budget, so the school has given us the most conservative of the two budgets, which is the house budget. Final numbers come in close to the sentence, more aggressive numbers, then the school, state, and federal numbers could change drastically. And once again, we'll talk about that later toward the presentation. School board is asking for local level funding, seven million, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars. The total proposed school budget is thirty-four million, ninety thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars. Total school revenue from all sources except the county is twenty-six million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Thus needing the amount to balance the school budget is that the local appropriation is seven point five million dollars. In order to absorb some of the costs, the school board is making major reductions and seeking supplements from the state and federal funds. These are the categories the state has, uh sorry, the school has given us on how they plan on spending their uh current budget they presented to you guys. Uh you can see the local amount has a seven point five uh as local, so that has not changed since last year. And you can see the other categories with their thirty-four million, ninety thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars. Um of course, their biggest expenses in instruction, and then it goes embarrass here, their transportation. And I'll point out also for transportation, that two hundred and seventy thousand the board usually gives the school for about three, three additional buses each year. So that's how we break that out, so you can see that those funds are going toward those bus purchases. This is a comparison of those same numbers compared to last year. So you can see instruction, they're showing a decrease for this upcoming year. Uh they're showing an increase in administration. Uh transportation is an increase of twenty-five. The two-seventies, what you guys gave is uh local level funding. Operations, small increase. Uh their lease payment, almost ten thousand dollars, and their technology is about eleven thousand. So once you swap all those around, their overall increase is still zero. So they've changed the different pots they've taken the money from, but the overall effect is zero.
What is the li- what are they leasing from us?
That's that uh, they're not from us. They have a honey whale uh contract for their HVAC systems.
So the young lady that was here with the audit spoke about leases and subleases and stuff like that. Is that where that is gonna be going into?
That would be one of the many things, yeah. So we're, what she was saying, we have to pull all leases. So like uh for instance, we have a lease with the antenna on the water tower. We'll have to pull that lease and go through everything like that. Um trying to think of some other leases we have right now. Gene Dixon Park, the lease with that, we have to pull every lease we have, so it's not just this, it's be.
That'll be broken out into us.
Yes, sir.
Different line items, so that we'll see ev- every lease will be shown.
That's why she's trying to put that out ahead of time, so we have to do some serious digging and find every lease we have to be compliant next year with this audit standard. Uh Buckingham County Department of Social Services and Comprehensive Services. Department of Social Services, their total expenditure is two point one million. Their state and federal funds, about one point six million. And so to balance, they're gonna need a county appropriation of five hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. This is an increase of ten thousand from last year. Uh combined their state and federal funds, we're reducing other line items, we're allowing the DSS employees to receive their five percent pay increase for just a ten thousand dollar increase. So they doing a good job in managing their funds, so they're gonna give everybody a five percent increase, but it's gonna cost ten thousand dollars extra. So that's great news for us on that side. Comprehensive Services, their total expenditure is one point seven million dollars. Their state and federal funds are one point four six, and so to balance, the county appropriation would be three hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars. State and federal funds have increased while keeping the local funding the same as last year, so there's no increase in local funds this upcoming year. Debt service and our industrial development authority. Industrial Development Authority, IDA, their proposed budget is a hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Currently, there are only two items that flow through the IDA, the debt service for the sewer plant and the tax abatement for the sale of the Gold Hill School. Uh the sewer plant has a payment of a hundred and eighty-one thousand, one seventy-six for upcoming year. That's their debt service payment. And the Gold Hill tax abatement should be twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars, so there's your one hundred and ninety-three thousand for that fund. Um as you remember, we agreed to try to help that business get up and running to abate some of the taxes the first few years. So this is where we'll be, and it's a reimbursement basis, so they gotta pay the taxes first, and they get reimbursed from the county. So it's not free taxes. They have to pay them first. Um upcoming debt, uh Kyle was talking about that earlier from Davenport. Um you can see the courthouse, elementary school on Route twenty, the middle school on Route sixty, the library, community center, and the wastewater plant. The wastewater plant, as I just said in the slide before, is the going through the IDA, but I listed here, so you can see that's your total debt. Uh going across from left to right, you'll see the courthouse. That's five hundred and five thousand, five hundred and five, five oh four, five oh three. So that kind of stays the same. Uh that expires and matures in twenty thirty-four. Elementary school on Route twenty, two point two million, about all the way across, so that's pretty consistent. That's gonna mature, that's in two pieces, by the way. There's one piece that's gonna expire in twenty twenty-seven and another one in twenty thirty-two. The middle school on Route sixty, you see for FY twenty-three, it's seven hundred and three thousand. There's a piece of that, that was in two pieces as well. There's a piece of that will expire next year in twenty twenty-three. So you'll see it drops from seven hundred and three thousand and twenty-three to three hundred and ninety-three and twenty-four. So once we get that one paid off, that'll free up some funds to do what you guys want to do with that. But that's why that decrease in uh payments has happened, and we can, one of those pieces paid off. So one will get paid off in twenty twenty-three, the other one will get paid off in twenty twenty-six. Library Community Center, we just refinanced that one, so that two hundred and ten thousand FY twenty-three, that's just the debt getting started. And then you see after that first year, it starts staying the same, about three hundred and forty-nine thousand per year, and that one expires in twenty thirty-nine. Um another thing at the bottom, that note, the elementary school, elementary school receives a federal subsidy called a qualified school construction bond. We call it QSCAB, in the amount of four hundred and thirty thousand. And we're also receiving Virginia VPSA refund for sixty-one thousand. So that, those two combined reduces the tax burden from three point eight million down to three point three million. So we were lucky, we got those refinanced to have those subsidies that we're still benefiting from today.
Absolutely, that's good.
Emergency services, this is uh, as Kristen said, we've changed a lot since last year. We have an old separate fund for emergency services. Uh this time last year, DRT was providing all the services to citizens. Now, this year, the county is fully staffing all EMS with stations in Dillon and Glenmore. Uh last year, we had about maybe five uh five county employees. This year, the budget is composed of twenty-one full-time staff and nine part-time staff members. Uh once again, like we did last year, we split this budget up into their operating expenses and reserve. The reserve for this year will be two hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. And we will treat that reserve like any other reserve in the budget, meaning that you will have to approve it before it's spent. So if he comes to you or I come to you saying we need something to buy, you guys will have to approve that before it gets big spent. So it's not just a rainy day fund to use for anything. Uh the total budget amount for this fund is one point nine million, a one million, nine hundred and forty-one thousand. Are we paying for the emergency services? The breakdown is the beginning of your balance, which is money left in that Dominion grant that Kristen referenced earlier. And our car recovery. Car recovery so far has still been coming in pretty good. So one line that's missing there, and you'll be glad to know, is transfer from general fund. So right now, we're not paying for anything for emergency services. But as Ms. Carter told you last year, when that, those funds run out, we possibly can be paying for that in the future. So we get to build it again this year. There's no county funds going toward emergency services.
Car recovery, that's seven hundred thousand.
Yes, sir.
Is that to date, that's through through this?
No, that's projected for next year.
Uh that's projected for next year?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's conservative then, right?
Yeah, we, yeah, yes, sir. We don't want to over and then come back to you and say we need more money.
Yeah, don't do that.
So if we can make it to seven hundred thousand, anything coming in actually would be great. All right, your commitments to fund balance, which you also call your reserves. These are your reserves of projects that the board has identified. All commitments, once again, must be approved by the board before spending. The overall commitment is decreased by six hundred forty-four thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars. The biggest part of that decrease with the eight hundred and three thousand that we had in there for the school's capital projects, you guys released that during the fiscal year, so we won't have that next year. Also, the solid waste, all the sites are navigated, so we don't have anything in there for solid waste sites for next fiscal year. As in the past, we've added payments from property sales. So the first payment we got for the sale of the Gold Hill School, the fifty thousand, we put that to your economic development line, so that fund increased by fifty thousand. So trying to use those funds that we sell from county property and county land to one day have some other economic developments. If you need it, it's there for you. So once again, that's just from sales of properties, not costing the taxpayers anything. So I think it's a good way of using the money that you get from sales to help look for your future. Uh county vehicle has been taken out of this proposed budget. My plan was to have those vehicles that we might need next year to use our ARPA fund for those. As Kristen said, we had the one point six million that you guys have not spent yet. We've obligated one point five to Firefly, but we haven't spent it yet. They haven't called for it yet. Uh we're going to get another one point six pretty soon. We have to twenty twenty-four to obligate those funds. We have to think twenty twenty-six to spend them, but we need to have them obligated by twenty twenty-four. So using that one-time money is a good way to use that one-time funds to buy one-time purchases like vehicles and uh trash trucks and stuff, I guess. So it wouldn't cost the taxpayer that. So we hope to take advantage of those in this current, in this new proposed budget year. And hopefully, we can make out great and have all kinds of things that we don't have to call, uh, ask the taxpayer to pay for. Uh the animal control facility, I actually increased that by uh two hundred seventy thousand dollars. We increased that because like us, all the surrounding counties are looking at uh replacing their animal control facility. Uh we all share like the same uh state vet, and she's kind of consistent on what she expects from the localities. The numbers we're seeing, they're going to come in pretty high. Uh we had a mandatory uh bid meeting this morning. And one of the guys that were here said, you know, that million dollar budget is going to be pretty tight. Our response to him is that we won't know until we bid it out. So we won't know what that number is going to be, but we thought we want to increase that number to get prepared in case it is over. And also, let me go back to that slide. Remember you guys, you were on the board back then, four hundred thirty thousand was a donation. So we need to get that facility built so that we can show that donation, that we're using those funds, what it was intended for. Um your reserve contingency, that's the money you have left throughout your, subtracting your um total expenses from your total revenues. This year is being proposed a hundred ninety-six thousand, which is a decrease of thirty-five thousand from the current year. This doesn't leave much wiggle of unexpected costs that may happen during the year. But once again, we're usually conservative in our spending. We don't spend all of our expenditures, which helps keeps us from dipping into our beginning of your balance. And I'll talk to you later about that state budget and how that number will possibly change.
Carl. I know in the past, we have uh, we have set money aside for trash trucks. Since they're so expensive. Is that something that we want to look back into? I mean, right now, you know, I know the ARPA money is going to come through, hopefully, but you know, that's maybe something that that we may need to look at.
Yes, sir. We, we would do that, and not only would we do that for trash trucks that are so expensive, we probably want to start doing it for EMS vehicles as well, because they're pretty expensive too. So we don't want to pay for all that at one time, and we want, it'd be easier to take a small bite, fifty thousand a year and get it built up than pay for it all at one time. So yes, sir, we will do that.
I think the last trash truck was like a half a million dollars.
Up there, and I think Lynn is saying, Kevin, they're getting higher and higher each month. So Lynn is already putting outfielders for those.
Okay, okay.
Our water and sewer funds. These are our funds that are enterprise funds, meaning they are self-supporting, and they're run like a business with fees collected from customers. So they require no tax support from the citizens. And actually, because we do our water billing and stuff up here and collections, the water fund actually uh transfers about two hundred thousand dollars to the general fund to help offset some of those costs. So water and sewer funds are, you know, we make money on water, but the sewer fund is uh kind of loses a little bit of money. Uh in your audit, Kristen mentioned that we had a slight decrease in water funds this year, but we knew that decrease was coming. That was because of the uh tank painting we did, and that was pretty expensive. We painted those both, both those tanks in Dillon. It's across the corner. So that was why that took a dip this past fiscal year. Uh the total water and sewer funds have a projected total increase of fifty-nine thousand. And that increase can be attributed to health insurance costs, retirement, and along with the proposed pay increases. But once again, those funds that they pay for from their um collections, from their users on the system, the taxpayer does not pay anything at all for those. Revenues, how do we expect to pay for everything? Here's your current tax table, and you can see uh, once again, there's no tax change. Real estate, public service, and air, real estate and public service at the fifty-two percent per hundred. Aircraft is at fifty-five percent, merchants' capital is at a dollar, machinery and tools is two dollars and ninety cent. State Corporation Commission personal property is four dollars and five, and personal property is four dollars and five as well, and they're all per one hundred dollars of value. Our local revenue is eighteen million six hundred sixty-six thousand and sixty-five dollars. That revenue is all revenue related to Buckingham citizens, whether directly related to the taxes we collect here in the county or fees such as sales tax that are collected through the state and flow back into the county. The total local revenue is projected to increase five hundred forty-six thousand, and that increases in two concentrated areas, your personal property taxes and other local revenue. And I'm going to go through and explain the two uh that are concentrated areas and why they're so high. First one, personal property, we have budgeted three point four million. Uh at our work session, I talked to you about what's going across the country, what uh the vehicle values increasing and going through the roof. Anybody's been through a car lot knows that there are not many cars on the lot, so the values for vehicles are skyrocketing right now. So the two things that affect what we pay on our vehicles, the tax rate and the value of the vehicle. Uh that one hundred ninety-nine thousand that we have in this for budget for the increase is not a tax increase. It's because the value of most vehicles are going up right now. Uh so to help to reduce the amount of taxes the citizens will pay, the commissioner of revenue is going to use a lower value column in the tax book. The lower value will help offset the increased value some, but of course, will not offset the total increase. And of course, some vehicles will see a decrease in value. I think the night of our public, our work session, the very first vehicle I picked was showing a decrease in value. So there are still going to be some with decreases in value. Not everybody's going to go up because it's just the nature of the beast. Um I've attached that same spreadsheet that Commissioner revenue gave us. I pulled out four random vehicles uh to show you how this is going to work next year. Uh the first, you see there's the first one, the Chevrolet Silverado. Last year, that value, that vehicle is valued at forty thousand eight hundred fifty dollars, and they paid a tax of one thousand six hundred fifty-four dollars. If the commissioner does nothing at all and leaves everything the same, you'll see the next column like a teal or blue. That value of that vehicle will go from forty thousand to forty-six thousand, and their taxes will go from one, one thousand six hundred to one thousand eight hundred. So what the commissioner decided to do is use one of the lower value columns, which is called a clean loan value. So instead of going from forty-six thousand, you'll see on that far right column, the burnt red is only going to forty-one thousand. And the taxes on that vehicle will now be basically one point seven. So that person's going to have a forty-six dollar increase in their taxes. Compared to you went to the middle, middle column, they would have about two hundred dollar increase in value. So using that column is going to definitely decrease your um headache or pain on the taxpayer. The second line is a twenty eighteen Ford Explorer. Once again, this current year, their value was thirty-three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, and so they were paying thirteen hundred dollars in taxes. If she did nothing and we did nothing, that value would go up to forty-one thousand, just about an eight thousand dollar increase in value on that vehicle. They would pay sixteen hundred dollars in taxes, which would be about three hundred dollars more. Uh by using this clean loan value that she's going to use next year, the value only went about four thousand dollars, and they're going to pay about a hundred and fifty-eight dollars in taxes, more taxes. So those four are just examples I pulled from that sheet she gave you. But if you look at the total column, um those values uh or taxes for the current year, those four vehicles had a tax uh income to the county of five thousand forty-one dollars. Uh going to that clean loan value to the far right, it's going to be fifty-four hundred dollars. So just on those four vehicles alone, we're going to pick up about four hundred dollars more in tax revenue. Whereas if she went with the middle column and did any, didn't do anything, it would be six thousand. So some of those values will jump up, but once again, they're all not going to jump up the same. Some will show action, show a decrease in.
I, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir. Supervisor Matthews.
I know I sent you some information on two bills that were being proposed uh at the General Assembly on uh used car values. Now let's just say that Mr. Chambers goes over to to say Davis Pontiac, and he wants to trade his vehicle. Where, where is she getting these numbers that she's getting that these vehicles are going up? Mr. Chambers goes over there and gets ten thousand dollars for his vehicle. I got the same vehicle, and I go over there and I get less than that. I mean, how, how is she determining? I mean, I guarantee you, I mean, you know how car dealers are. They're going, they're going to try to see how far they can take you down the road.
Ain't time for you, Kevin.
They're going to see, they're going to see how far they can take you down the road until you stand up for yourself. I'm not going to be, uh you know, I'd like to get as much as I can for my car, but I know them too. They're going to give you as least as they can for that car. So what, what concrete evidence is she showing me that, that these cars are actually doing that? I mean, how is she determining those figures?
There, there's an actual book, like that Kelly Blue book. She has, it's a NADA book. It has every type of vehicle listed in these columns, and that's where she gets the values from. So she can go to this, like that twenty nineteen Chevrolet Silverado. She can go to that book in that column and tell you, this is the value of that vehicle. That's what she's getting.
I can put anything I want to in a book, but that don't mean it right, that don't mean that that's the way it happened though. I went to sell my car here recently. The value, the Blue Book value was twenty-eight thousand dollars. I got twenty-four thousand. So how are you figuring, I, I'm going to pay taxes on twenty-eight thousand? That doesn't make sense.
I don't know. Um I guess the way to say it is that she's had, she has to use something. So she's always used those books for all values. So in the previous fiscal year, she's always used that NADA book as well. So there's no way for her to go and look at every vehicle and say, this is your value on that vehicle. She has to use something that's consistent, so um.
Who's putting the Blue Book together?
It's a, it's not a book that we put together. It's a national.
I'm saying, who's putting the Blue Book together? Who's putting, who's putting those figures in there?
I don't know.
Well, that tells you all you need to know right there, right?
That's right, but it's, those are averages, they're not specific vehicles. I know my son had a vehicle that he drove for two years. He got six thousand dollars more than what he paid for it, and a dealer bought it back from him. It prices are increasing by a whole lot on used vehicles.
A whole lot of people getting more money for it than what they bought it for.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Oh, I would like to know how much does the county receive on these, on airplanes in a year's time in taxes?
Um, I can tell you.
I've seen vehicles and all, but I haven't heard of airplanes.
It's about nine hundred dollars, right? I think it's nine hundred dollars. I think we got one that's registered here in the county.
Got what?
One that's registered here in the county. So I'm pretty sure it's like nine hundred dollars. Kevin's going to look it up right now, but I think it's nine hundred dollars.
Does that answer your question, Supervisor Davis? Guys, if we could come to order, please, um.
So two years ago, Dennis, for your question, it was nine hundred and thirty dollars. Last year was nine hundred and thirteen dollars. So that's what we received from.
Does that answer your question, Supervisor Davis?
Oh, what's the value of? I mean, wait, what's the value of? How much does?
You have to get that from Commissioner.
All right, let's continue. Mr. Carter, please.
We, we, I can get Kevin to work on that. We got the tax rate and the back and the tax, we can figure it out.
Sounds good.
All right.
All's going up. Much of airplanes got there going up.
Everything's going up. All right, Mr. Carter.
All right. The other item for local revenue, why it increased, uh is other local revenues. Uh that major change was caused in the sale of the Gold Hill School. Uh in twenty twenty-three January of next year, the second payment would happen, and that payment's for two hundred thousand dollars. So that's what increased our local revenue for about two hundred thousand dollars that Gold Hill second payment is coming due next year. Um this is our local revenue showing the changes from last fiscal year. And I thought it'd be, since they're all showing increases, except they're one for used money property. I highlight that one at the bottom for the forty thousand dollar loss. That's because, as we all know, interest rates are so low, as Kyle just said. So we're constantly having to reduce our earnings on funds because we're not getting any, we're not getting any earnings because the rates are so low. So we continue to lower them down. We're hoping one day this can take a turn and we can start seeing uh those six-digit figures we used to get in uh our earnings. But so far, this fiscal year, they're not coming in like we thought they would. Our state and federal funds. Uh we have three categories. We have non-categorical aid, which is one point six million. And these are funds that we get from the state, mainly your personal property tax related, we get from the state that you can use anywhere in the general fund. Second one is categorical aid. Those are funds for specific, specific purposes. Those are, those are your constitutional officers and their salaries they get from the state. And then we have other state revenue, which is our debt service credit from VPSA. Uh so as a comparison again from last year, you'll see uh non-categorical aid is going to increase twenty thousand four hundred dollars. Categorical aid is a hundred seventeen thousand, and other state revenues is eight thousand dollar increase. Uh this is a more blown out picture of your state and categorical funds with the constitutional officers and all the funds we get from the state. You're seeing that uh Commonwealth Attorney, the Sheriff, Commissioner of Revenue, Treasurer. We, and once again, we're conservative, and we use the current uh values we get from the comp board. Once that budget of the state is approved, we should get at least a five percent that they're giving their employees, but we didn't include this in the budget yet because we haven't gotten those final numbers yet. So those changes show zero. They should have some increases when we get the state's final budget. So once again, kind of good news for you guys that we balanced the budget without increasing those numbers, and we still have it balanced. So it's only going to get better now because you, you're currently footing the bill of all those pay increases. Once the state money comes in, that will um give money back to the county and have you more money left to spend. What to say about those, the E nine one one fund down at the bottom line. Once again, as I said before, that was a reclass. That was an EMS, so we put it back to its own department. So that's why it's showing up fifty-five thousand dollar change. It's not really new money. It's just been from one department to another. Uh the victim witness, that's a grant funding position. As you can see, that state amount is seventeen thousand six six seven. Uh the anti-littersel grant as well. Commissioner, Junior Commissioner Rset, forty-five hundred dollars is a grant as well. So everything above that are positions that we get money from the state. And once again, once we get those, we'll get those to you so you can see them. That's just a blow up the federal money. There is that QSCAB qualified school construction money, the four hundred and thirty thousand we give back for our debt service. Uh the victim witness, part of that grant, that position is uh state and federal. This is the federal portion of it. Um and selective enforcement, we'll get that number once we get the um mu- numbers from the state. One thing is missing, and we talked about before, is the ARPA money, our rescue recovery funds. That's our big decrease in federal funds. We don't have the luxury of having that money going forward, so we're going to take advantage of that money and get all we can out of it. But there's no money com- coming this fiscal year for that, those type of funds. Summary. So tonight, what you have before you've always been advertised, our total revenue is a sixty-seven billion three hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. Less our total expenditures, sixty-seven billion one hundred ninety-eight thousand. That leaves your reserve contingency of a hundred ninety-six thousand thirty dollars.
And of course, that's if all commitments to the fund balance are expended.
If everything is spent, yes, sir. So once again, that's your play you left, have left in this budget at this current time. Once again, this includes all proposed pay increases for the county and school employees. It does not include any federal covert relief funds, and it does not include any tax increases. Uh this is a slide that I always like to put in here because you hear that number of beginning our sixty-seven million dollar budget, but the taxpayer is not on the line for the whole thing. So that first column is our total budget, and you see it adds up to the sixty-seven million dollars we talked about earlier. But there's just in the middle column, your state federal and grant funds that help reduce those costs to the local government. So our local budget column, the third column, is only thirty-one million four hundred forty-eight dollars. So that's what your Buckingham taxpayers are paying. They're not paying on the sixty-seven million because I can see in that second column, the school, but I'm sales because about twenty-six million in federal and state funds that the county does not come up with. Your commitments, of course, down there, the four point one million, that's all local because that's coming from the county. The IDA is all local. Once again, emergency. Once again, emergency services, thank goodness, that one point nine million is all federal and state funds right now and cost recovery. So there is no local money being spent for EMS right now. Once again, your water and sewer systems, they're supported by the users of the system. So there's no county appropriation to those, uh, appropriations to those systems as well. Just a quick note, our fund balance and policy states we should keep at least maintaining an assigned fund balance of ten percent. So if you were to spend the entire budget, except for reserves, definitely you were eleven million dollars, which is thirty-six percent of your total local budget. If you were to spend our entire budget and reserves, definitely you're seven million dollars, and you still would be twenty-two percent of your total budget. So you would still be in good fund balance position, but hopefully we don't see the whole budget being spent in one fiscal year. All right, and this is far up and put enough to talk to you then. Slight curve ahead. So as I mentioned earlier, the state has not adopted a budget as of yet. So our state revenues will change. Uh, the biggest change regarding the state revenue would be with our school system because they're the biggest, uh, recipient of school and state and federal funds. On the local government side, we use state figures from last year for most of this budget. This is conservative because we know the compensation board should be increasing their funding at a minimum to cover the five percent pay increases for their, uh, comp board positions. When those numbers increase, it will give you the board a bigger unassigned fund balance, which will lower your local portion and present in certain departments. School board has also used a conservative number. They use the House budget. But when dealing with the amount of state funding they receive, it has a possibility of being a significant amount that, uh, budget goes to the House, uh, the Senate version. The school uses a conservative number, lower budget from the House. The Senate budget is approximately three million dollars more than what they've used in their proposed numbers for you guys. And when a final budget is adopted, it's more likely it'll be in the middle of the two budgets. They won't, they won't get the entire three million dollars, but they're probably going to get a little bit more than what they submitted to you guys tonight. And why is that important? Virginia Code, section five fifteen dot two dash two five oh seven. It states, any locality may amend this budget to adjust the aggregate amount to be appropriated during the current fiscal year as shown in the current adopted budget as prescribed in section fifteen dot two dash two five oh four. However, any such amendment which exceeds one percent of the total expenditure shown in the current adopted budget must be accomplished by publishing a notice of a meeting and a public hearing once in a newspaper, having general circulation in that locality at least seven days prior to the meeting date. So what does that mean? That means that if we get those comp board numbers in and school gets more than six hundred and seventy-three thousand, we'll be back here for another public hearing.
Right.
Because it's going to be more than one percent of our total budget. Uh, so there is our total budget, sixty-seven million, one percent of the six hundred and seventy-three thousand. So I got a feeling that when you take in the schools' numbers, it's going to be more than that six hundred and seventy-three thousand. And once again, that's not bad news. It's, uh, the more money we get from the state and outsourced is a good thing. So also the pay increases for the com board positions are currently in this budget. So as it stands right now, once again, you guys are paying total for those positions, those pay increases. So as more com board money comes in to pay for those positions, it will increase your unassigned fund balance, give you more funds for unexpected things that happen throughout the year. The potential increase the schools will see will not affect your unassigned fund balance at all because they receive their increases from the state and their, their increase will be, um, program specific. So like, if they receive money for, more money for Title Four, they're going to increase their Title Four expenses by that amount of revenue. So it's not going to affect your local contribution at all. As a reminder, we do every year, we remind everyone that the county does offer a tax program called Tax Stabilization for the Disabled and Early. Please contact the Commissioner of Revenue to see if you can qualify for that and, and reap the benefits of it. Uh, the chairman will now open the public hearing. This is just a public hearing, so no board action can take place tonight. The board will recess and reconvene next Monday on April twenty-fifth at six o'clock to adopt the budget and the tax rate for the twenty twenty-three fiscal year. And that is my presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Does anyone have, does any board member have any questions for Mr. Carter? I know we had questions as we went along, so. Yes, sir. Supervisor Brian.
Mr. Carter, hooray on the fifty-two cent tax rate. Uh, that's tremendous. But based on the money that we've received, you know, the ARPA funds and the Dominion money, if we were not to have been given that money, of course, a lot of stuff would have changed, um, especially on the EMS side. Is it safe to say that we would be having a tax increase?
Yes, it would be a significant increase because all those star costs for EMS were something that we got lucky that we got those federal funds for.
It, it hit at the perfect storm.
Yes, sir.
For us.
Because, you know, like you said earlier, those vehicles, we purchased two new vehicles. We're not at just one site. We're at two sites. We have renovations in Glenmore. So we did a lot with those federal funds that if we didn't have them, the taxpayer would be footing the bill. So it would be a significant increase if we didn't have them.
In case the people don't know, those two ambulances are tremendous. They were.
Two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, and they were COVID safe. So kudos to you and your staff. And the finance department. I mean, you know, everybody here, members of the board as well.
Got a grant too.
Yes, that, uh, I mean, we, we definitely try to keep the tax rate as low as we can. And, you know, I just want to make it clear that, that we hit a home run this year. So hopefully if.
Strike out next year then.
Yeah, let's, let's keep it going next year, you know, with the cost recovery. Uh, you know, maybe we can keep it going where, like you said, there will be no money needed for EMS. So just fuel for thought. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
All right, unless there are any other questions, I will open the public hearing for the operating budget. Ms. Land, did anyone sign up? Okay, so we will close the public hearing. And just a reminder, we're not voting on that tonight. We're going to wait until next week on April twenty-fifth at six P M. So thank you, Mr. Carter, for that great presentation. Uh, moving under item L zoning matters, Ms. Edmiston, introduction of case twenty-two dash S U P three hundred, landowner applicant Aaron Byler. Ms. Edmiston.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We do have an introduction for a zoning case. This is twenty-two S U P three hundred. As Mr. Chairman mentioned, it is landowner and applicant Aaron Byler, and he's located at two fifty-seven Spouses Lane, Dilwyn. Tax map one twenty-four parcel twelve. There's approximately a hundred and twenty-one point six acres located at two fifty-seven Spouses Lane. It's currently an A one agricultural zoning district. The applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating a sawmill. The applicant is asking the Board of Supervisors to hold a public hearing regarding this request. This case came to the attention of the zoning administrator by way of a complaint. After investigation and meeting with the landowner, it was discovered that a commercial sawmill was operating. Um, I have been working with Mr. Fowler since August. Um, he did complete his application in February of this year, and this has gone to the Planning Commission for an introduction and public hearing. This was introduced to the Planning Commission on February twenty-eighth, and a public hearing was held on March twenty-eighth. All Planning Commission members were present, and one public comment was made in support of this case. Supervisor Allen made a motion to move this case forward to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval. Commission member Cruz provided a second to the motion. The vote to bring the Board of Supervisors, to bring this to the Board of Supervisors with approval was unanimous. I do want to point out that there are currently fifteen conditions. This was an increase from the, um, eleven that were originally placed. There was discussion regarding the driveway entrance, number five, um, from State Route twenty should be installed per the VDOT permit. It was originally introduced to the Planning Commission with a width of thirty feet. Planning Commission made the condition, amendment to the condition to bring this driveway to fifteen feet wide. Hours of operation for the sawmill would be six A M. to six P M. Monday through Saturday, as indicated in condition four. And condition six, um, is regarding signage for maximum safety. This was, uh, discussed in great detail last month with the Planning Commission. And the condition that came up would be that signs per the M U T C D, which is the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices Standards and Approved Per VDOT, shall be placed at the entrance as indicated on the VDOT land use permit, which is number three one six three five three one six at State Route twenty, which would be the new entrance for the permit to alert public of a commercial sawmill entrance and signage placed at Spouses Lane and Route twenty indicating no truck traffic. The only other thing that would be a bit different is, um, condition number fifteen, the applicant shall provide certification from a structural engineer regarding the construction, design, safety, and structural integrity for usage as a commercial sawmill because the building permit that was originally obtained for this sawmill was for a farm use building. So with this special use permit, it is noted that now the usage of that building is no longer a farm use building, but a commercial structure. Mr. Byler is present with us this evening to discuss this, um, if needed. Um, but what would be the wishes of the Board of Supervisors? Would it be to hold a public hearing, possibly May ninth, next month at six P M?
I saw what we're sending for public hearing next month.
Is there a second to that motion for a public hearing for next month on this zoning case?
I'll second it. I have a question.
Okay, the motion is by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Brian to carry this to a public hearing for, at six o'clock on our May ninth meeting.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Vote. I have a question.
Yes, sir. Supervisor Brian.
Mr. Byler, are you aware of the conditions fifteen, the fifteen conditions? And you agree with those fifteen conditions? Okay.
All right, all in favor, please record your vote. Aye, those opposed, no. With the electronic voting board, and that decision is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Edmiston. Our next item on your agenda is item M one, consider an appointment to the Piedmont, Virginia Community College Board in place of Joseph Scruggs.
Chairman, I remember motioning for George Gooden. She, uh, interested in serving on that board.
All right, the motion has been made by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Brian to appoint George Gooden to the Community College Board. So anyone have any questions? Mr. Carter, did we send Mr. Scruggs a letter thanking him for his service?
He always does.
We, okay, just want to make sure. All right. Those in favor, please record your vote. Aye, those opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item is M two, consider an appointment to the Planning Commission for District Three. And Supervisor Matthews, I will call on you for that, sir, if you are ready.
Uh, yes, sir. I wanted to, uh, nominate Pete Kapalinski.
You want to put a motion on that Supervisor? All right, motion to, a motion has been made by Supervisor Matthews, seconded by Vice Chairman Chambers to appoint Pete Sap, Pete Kapasinski to the Planning Commission for District Three. Anyone have any questions? Will we vote? All in favor, please record your votes. Aye, those opposed, no. And that's unanimous. Thank you. The next agenda item is M three, emergency management. Ms. Holland, EMS coordinator, and update on the emergency operations plan. So, uh, thank you, Ms. Holland, for being here.
So just to update you, the plan has been submitted to the state for approval as well as some edits. I've gotten that back, and we'll have it available to you all uh, for any comments or edits that you all deem necessary. Biggest changes were that we updated the documents that it's user and, or end user friendly. Uh, we understand that this is a pretty extensive document and that most people who go to use it are going to use it in the event, not necessarily prior to. So more user friendly, um, more up to date information, a more all hazards approach. And it will be, this copy will be sent to you all, and I open to your approval for next month.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is M four, emergency management. Mr. Davis, EMS Director in Chief, a request to use training reserve funds. And it's my understanding that these funds are in the budget. We just have to allocate. Is that right, Mr. Carter? Okay.
I know y'all got used to me asking you guys to appropriate money, but now, tonight, I'm asking to get some back uh, in coordination with the volunteer fire chiefs. You guys know, I work with them, uh, occasionally, well, uh, pretty often. There seems to be a countywide approach to try to fill a niche in this county that's not been filled previously for some, some technical rescue things. So we had the state bring in a funded course for introduction to that discipline, and, uh, it was so well received that we had um, roughly twenty firemen that weren't able to take it because we had so many, you know, so much interest. So reached out to the state for the same thing. They cannot provide us another funded course. So, uh, their best plan of action was for us to go for a non-funded, which just meant that, um, I called some friends who are instructors for it, asked if they could come out and teach at the state instructor rate and all that stuff. They said, yep. So anyways, in short, I'm requesting the, uh, authorization to, um, use up to thirty-eight hundred dollars for this course that will certify members from all of the departments in the county in introduction to technical rescue.
Cody, what would it be if you or Ryan became trainers for that?
Um, I, it's funny you bring that up. The state chief, that's what he would like to do. We actually do a lot of our training on the fireside, uh, in conjunction with Prince Edward County. And this technical rescue thing is like the fad right now, and they don't have a lot of instructors in their cadre. So we're looking into that. Um, there would likely not be costs associated with it. We would jump into some of their funded instructor courses, just like I took the other one the other month. And then we could maybe teach some stuff in-house at that point.
Then we could rent you out and make money to go back into your budget.
Yeah, that works for me.
I mean, to other, other counties. I mean, realistically, you know, if, if, if you or Ryan would become trainers, then of course, you know, you're going to teach our people for free, but, you know, rent you out to make money for.
He goes from Pedro to Robo.
Make it sound so transactional.
Okay.
Whatever's going to work, whatever helps, I'll do it.
There's a motion on the floor, uh, made by Supervisor Brian, seconded by Supervisor Davis to allow of up to thirty-eight hundred dollars in the training reserve funds. Anyone have any questions before we rent Mr. Davis out?
May the chief.
Those in favor, record your votes. Aye, those opposed, no. And that decision is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you. One last thing before I leave. Uh, we had our biannual inspection from the state office of VMS, uh, last week. They come out every other year just to make sure we're on the up and up and keeping everything spick and span. It went well. So here we have our license good until April twenty twenty-four.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yep, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you, chief. Our next item is M five, and that is Department of Social Services. Ms. Stephanie Coleman is asking to use the community center for a job fair and requesting that we waive the rental fee on September eighth, twenty twenty-two. And so there is a motion on the floor by Vice.
I've got a question.
Okay, all right, all right. So let me go ahead and do this real quick, and I'll, and I'll be right back to you Supervisor Matthews. So the motion is, um, to approve by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Brian. Supervisor Matthews.
Uh, Mr. Carter, did you get in touch with Ms. Coleman? Is that just, uh, for Buckingham businesses or is it someone else?
When I look at the second page of her letter, it's going to bring in outside employers, but it's going to be for Buckingham citizens. So some of their jobs potentially could be outside the county. But they're, they're focused on Buckingham residents. You know what I mean? So you might have somebody from Prince Edward come over looking for Buckingham citizens.
Does that answer your question Supervisor Matthews?
Well, it does, but.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just thinking about, hopefully they were businesses, there will be some businesses from Buckingham there too, right? So not just from Prince Edward.
Yeah, just outside.
Okay, well, we want to get people hired. That's the, the main objective, so.
Are we ready to vote? Any other questions? Those in favor, please record your vote. Aye, those opposed, no. And that is unanimous. And, and I, and I know we've had some preliminary discussion amongst ourselves about maybe having the, um, Library and Community Center Committee look at some of those fees because I know that you all, and I've had some calls from organizations like Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, some of the really smaller ones as to not being able to maybe foot that bill and, so maybe the committee can look at that. Would you all be okay with that? Or having some sort of a special rate for maybe inside the county as to outside of the county?
Well, we've looked at, we've looked at that, and I think, just, this is just my opinion. You know, most of the organizations you're talking about are school age children. And in a lot of other localities, they talk to the school division because the children are already at school. And if they have an after-school program, they work something out with the school division, which I think they should be open to that.
I would agree one hundred percent.
So before they come to us, I think they should explore that avenue, uh, where it's no cost to the parents as far as transportation. If they start moving them around the county, somebody's got to move them from the school to the library, uh, or community center. And while they're right there at school, it would be a, a great gesture from the school division to, to reach out and try to bridge that gap for these.
We talking the Boy Scouts?
Well, just any local group who can't find space.
Like the Boy Scouts don't meet until like six o'clock.
Yeah, right.
You know, so that's, that's out of the question of staying at the school because usually the after-school programs are done at five. So, I mean, good, good idea, Mr. Matthews, but, you know, the timing kind of, you know, throws a loop into that a little bit.
I understand.
But there are some groups that would like to meet maybe like immediately after school.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, so I, I certainly understand that. But the school should be more open to that.
I think you're going down a slippery slope when you start offering it to every organization at no cost.
Right.
Whether it's a nonprofit or whatever. I mean, I just think that it really needs to, to be looked at a little bit closer. We, I don't think we develop those prices.
Whether it's a nonprofit or whatever, I mean, I just think that it really needs to, to be looked at a little bit closer, we, I don't think, we developed those prices, we looked at other localities, surrounding localities, and we're actually on the cheaper side, believe it or not, and, than these other places. So, you know, we're not really thinking that we're charging an arm and a leg, but, you know.
Sure.
I'd like to help them all, but sometimes you've got to draw the line.
Okay, anything else on that, or are we ready to continue?
Is that something that the library committee is still going to look into?
Can, I mean, we, we could do that.
You know, especially the Boy Scouts.
Yeah.
You know.
Where are the Boy Scouts meeting at now?
They, one meets, so, one group meets at a church, and the other group meets at another church, I think essentially, but, but, but they would like to meet in the building, because it's got more resources other than the church currently has, so that's.
I know currently, we were letting them use Gold Hill.
Yeah, I know.
And then when we sold that building, that kind of.
Damped them up a little bit. So, okay.
But I agree with you, Mr. Matthews, you know, one of the things that was said when they renovated the school on twenty, that you could section off portions with the alarm system, you know, where if people walked into different areas of the school, the alarm would activate. So.
I just think also, without putting a burden on our recreational staff, if you're not meeting until six or seven o'clock in after, in the afternoon, you know, we shouldn't be tying up our staff till that time of day, if it's, I mean, I'm not telling the Boy Scouts what to do, they meet whatever time that's convenient for them, but, you know, our staff should be off at a reasonable time without having to tie them up all night, and that's, that's another thing.
All right.
Right, right.
Our next item is M six, Jason Warham, Chief of the Dillon Volunteer Fire Department, a request to get a dumpster placed at the firehouse for the upcoming chicken barbecue on May the first, and a supervisor has been, a motion has been made by Supervisor Davis, seconded by Supervisor Brian to grant this request, any questions? If not, all in favor, please record your vote, aye, those opposed, no. Dumpster is approved, thank you, gentlemen. And as you see on the amended agenda item M seven, consider an appointment to the Piedmont Senior Resources Board of Directors, Mr. Carter, did you want to address that, sir?
Yes, Supervisor Matthews agreed to be on that board again, we have been since told that he cannot serve on that board, because they have a six-year term limit, so, he can only be reappointed after a one-year break.
Right.
So, we're going to have to find somebody else to serve on that board for at least a year, or till you decide to appoint somebody else.
And so, but, what we were told by Ms. Young with, with Piedmont Senior Resources, unbeknownst to us, after the term ends, that board member can come back only after a, a one-year break.
Yes, yes, sir.
And Ms. Young reached out, and, and I did too, to Rebecca Carter, and she has interest in serving as a volunteer representative on that, so.
I'd be happy for her to take my place.
Would that be your motion?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion to nominate Ms. Carter in my absence for one year.
Motion by Supervisor Davis, I'm sorry, motion by Supervisor Matthews, seconded by Supervisor Davis to appoint Rebecca S. Carter to the Piedmont Senior Resources Board of Directors. And just to be clear, each county gets two appointments.
Right, you need two.
So, right, so.
We got one.
I understand that she only goes serving for a year, then Mr. Matthews coming back, right?
Yes, sir.
That's in the motion, right? I thought I heard him say that in the motion.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Yeah, I thought, yeah.
Okay. All right, anyone questions? All in favor, please record your vote, aye, those opposed, no. And that is unanimous, thank you, gentlemen. Item N, County Attorney Matters, Mr. Wright. Okay, thank you, no report. County Administrator's Report, Mr. Carter.
A couple things. First of all, I want to say, I talked to Lynn Hill today, he advised me the tire day went way above and beyond where we thought it would go, so, I'll have some numbers for you next month on how much they collect and everything, but I talked to him this morning, and he said it was amazing how many tires they collected over the weekend.
Good news.
Also, I got some more good news, I have a letter here from the Office of Attorney General. They had some questions regarding our redistricting, so, Mr. Wright and Jamie and myself, you know, did some back and forth with them, answering all the questions they had. So, we finally got this letter dated April fifth, and it says on the second page, under these facts, we find no reason to object to Buckingham County's proposed changes to its voting practices. Accordingly, on behalf of the Attorney General on pursuant to Virginia Code, section twenty-four dot two dash one twenty-nine, this letter serves as Attorney General's certification of no objection to proposed changes, so, we got a letter of no objection for our redistricting, so, we are done.
Good news, thank you, Mr. Carter, and, and just to remind everybody, what, is it May first is when the new lines come into play?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All that hard work, and I thank Mr. Wright again, and Jamie, and all the people serving that committee to.
That was a lot of work, thank you.
Get that redistricting done.
Under item, well, next on the agenda, on item P, you have your informational items, and unless anyone has any questions, or wants to point anything out, we're going to continue there. Are there any other board member matters for item Q?
I got one.
Yes, sir, Vice Chairman Chambers.
Mr. Chairman, I understand, my understanding that the girls team went undefeated this year, I think we should recognize them, past evolution.
And it's basketball, right?
Basketball, yeah.
Okay.
James River District Champions.
They're the champions.
Yeah, they did really well, so you want to put that in form of a motion, sir?
We were recognized that.
Okay, motion by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Matthews to recognize the girls' basketball team on their district championship.
Championship, uh-huh.
Okay, good news, all in favor, please record your votes, aye, those opposed, no. Has everyone voted, it's unanimous, are there any other board member matters, gentlemen, before we move on?
Chairman.
Yes, sir Supervisor.
Currently, I'm on the CSA board, and I can't make the meetings because of the times that the meetings are taking place, so, I'm going to need someone to replace me on the CSA board.
Are you looking for us to take action tonight on that?
As, the sooner the better.
All right Supervisor Brown, when do they meet?
Once a month.
Third Wednesday.
Yep, the third Wednesday of the month. CSA Comprehensive Services Act.
It's, it's what time, Mr. Carter?
Ten thirty in the morning, so.
And it has to be a board member and not staff? Has to be a board member, okay.
No, don't look at me.
No, ten thirty.
Does anyone have any interest in serving on the CSA board, gentlemen?
We have a staff, Kevin serves on it for staffs.
What day of the week is it?
It's on Wednesday, and this upcoming month, it's on the twenty-seventh, but usually it's on the third.
Third Wednesday of the month.
April is twenty-seventh.
Do you have interest Supervisor Matthews, or Vice Chairman Chambers?
I don't see nobody beating your door down, I don't see anybody beating your door down to get this too.
It's quite interesting to sit on that board.
Timing is just the wrong time.
It is.
That's what makes it hard, evenings of evenings will be one thing.
Ten thirty.
Got something to do at ten thirty. I do it to eat breakfast at ten thirty.
I don't even know that.
So, do we want to continue this, or do we need to make an appointment tonight, Mr. Carter?
Do you want to, um, say, see if I can serve on it as well, until you cast my name?
Sure, as long as the board's okay with that, are y'all okay with that, Supervisors, okay?
I'll think, I'll think about it between now and next month.
Thank you Supervisor Matthews.
Well, never mind, I got, I got, I got my meetings that day too in Farmville, so.
The issue is, is one individual resigned and has left, and now, the only individuals left, not including Mr. Brian, are the core, so, we need.
Right at the cusp.
Yeah. Exactly, yes.
How many board members is?
Do they take your pictures over there?
Five.
Do I like put Jordan on there?
Supposed to be seven.
I missed, I, I'll, I'll be in Farmville during that time.
I said I'm going to put you on the board so you take your picture.
So Supervisor Matthews, in all seriousness?
I'll take it.
Okay.
Make a motion and put Ms. Matthews on it.
A motion has been.
You need that in a motion?
Uh, yes, yes.
Motion has been made by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Davis to appoint Supervisor Matthews to the CSA board. All in favor, please record your vote, aye, those opposed, no. It's unanimous, congratulations Supervisor Matthews.
Don, I'll talk to you about it.
Are there any other board matters that you want to have discussed?
On executive session?
All right, next item is item R, Executive Closed Session, Supervisor Brown.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Chairman Chambers.
Discussion of Consideration of Accusation of Real Property of Public Purpose, of the disposition, of disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting will advise that effective bargaining position and negotiation of statute of the public body. Code two point two dash thirty-seven eleven point eight point three point, I'm sorry.
So, the motion has been made by Vice Chairman Chambers, seconded by Supervisor Brown to enter into Executive Closed Session as stated. Those in favor, please record your votes, aye, those opposed, no. That is unanimous, we are in closed session.
Let me go back here.
Together and we need a motion to enter, to exit closed session. So is there a motion to that regard?
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Davis and seconded by Supervisor Bryant to return to closed session.
We're trying to open session.
To open session, excuse me. And this is also a certified certification at the best of each board member's knowledge. Only business matters related to the codes of which the executive meeting was convened, discussed, are considered in closed session. Is everyone ready to vote? All in favor, please record your vote. Aye. Those opposed, no. The motion carries unanimously. There is no action as a result of closed session. So what we'll do now is recess to reconvene to Monday, April 25th, 2022 at 6:00 PM to consider adoption of the budget. So we are in recess.